So I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, February 13th, 2018. Just so everyone is aware, please be advised that beginning with today's Public Board of Trustees meeting, we are improving our online streaming technology using YouTube Live Stream, so that viewers can access both live streams and past recordings on a phone, tablet, or Windows or Mac computer. The live broadcast will be visible on the board meeting's webpage of the CBE website as usual, and can also be viewed directly on YouTube. So I know all of you kids later will want to go watch the YouTube video of yourselves. So as is our custom, we begin our board meeting with the singing of our National Anthem. We are very honored today to have the students from Grant McEwen Division II Choir singing "Oh, Canada." I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students.
Well, thank you so much to the Grant McEwen Division II Choir for singing "Oh, Canada" today. One of our favorite parts of our meetings is the entertainment that we get from our awesome students before a meeting starts. So thank you so much for joining us today.
We now have a student from Grant McEwen School who will be doing the acknowledgement of the lands. We'd like to welcome Isaiah to the podium.
I am Isaiah, and I am a Grade Four student at Grant McEwen School. Our elders have shared that it is important to acknowledge the land where we gather and the First Nations who traditionally lived here. It shows respect for people, to contributions, and the ways of knowing which are reflected through the stories and songs that have lived on this land for thousands of years. We are making this acknowledgement at the beginning of our gathering today to further demonstrate our commitment to work together as a community in laying the foundation for reconciliation through education. We would like to acknowledge traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nations, which includes the Syxica, the Pecanee, and the Guinean. We also acknowledge the Sutina and the Stony Nakota First Nations, the Métis Nation, and all the people who make their homes in the 37 region of South Alberta.
Thank you, Isaiah. That was beautiful. So I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting, representing our stakeholder groups. From Alberta Teachers Association, Local 38, we have Kevin Kimm. And from our Elementary School Principals Association, we have Rosemary Harms. And from our Senior High School Principals Association, we have Mr. Mike Wilson. Welcome. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda changes have been received. Item 8.2.3, Impact of Proposed Amendments to Board Meeting Procedures, be removed from the agenda, and a letter from the Minister of Education dated February 9th, 2018, be added to the agenda as item 8.2.4 correspondence.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Thank you, Trustee Davis. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. As there are no awards or recognition scheduled today, our next business is a school presentation from Grant McEwen School. Director Yee, would you please introduce the presentation?
Thank you very much, Chair Hurdman, trustees, CBE colleagues, and guests. As Director of Area IV, I am honored to introduce you to students and staff from Grant McEwen School. This afternoon, they will share academic success from the perspective of their 325 student kindergarten-to-grade-six school. Grant McEwen is located in the northeast community of Falcon Ridge, with students from both Falcon Ridge and the developing community of Cornerstone. Calgary Board of Education results to academic success indicates that each student will be literate and numerate, able to integrate the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and competencies acquired across all academic disciplines. Principal Barb McPherson, her staff members, and students will be providing you a closer look at the academic discipline of mathematics and its place in their school development plan and the daily life of their school in alignment with our CBE math strategy. I know that Grant McEwen students are seeing themselves as capable learners, deepening their understanding with meaningful discussion and active participation within the discipline of mathematics. You'll certainly see that this afternoon. These students are working daily to develop their procedural fluency as well as higher-order thinking skills. Teachers create appropriately challenging and authentic tasks that foster both mathematical proficiency and student engagement. Their teachers also craft carefully formative assessments and provide feedback in order to foster a growth mindset in their students. They're students who are now capable of engaging in productive struggle to find mathematical solutions. Our sincere appreciation to the choir students from grade four to six and their music teacher Heidi Fong for leading us in an enthusiastic "Oh, Canada" earlier, and a certain special thank you to Isaiah for his acknowledgement of the land. The Grant McEwen School Council Executive are also with us today, so that's really excellent. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Principal Barb McPherson, Assistant Principal Irene Mastrek, and Vice Principal Burget Mao. In their school development plan video and the mathematics tasks, you'll also hear from our very articulate Grant McEwen students. Welcome. It's so great to have you here.
Thank you for the opportunity to showcase our school. For the past several years, we've been focusing our school development plan around literacy and mathematics with a strong emphasis on inquiry. I will be specifically focusing on the work that staff and students did last year, which was based on increased student use of mathematical manipulatives, mathematical vocabulary, and ability to communicate their mathematical reasoning. I would like to show you a summary of that work that we completed this year in a video. Grant McEwen's 2016-2017 School Development Plan is geared toward cultivating the growth, confidence, and practical skills of all students in mathematics. This mathematical focus came about after careful analysis of annual data conducted at the school level by administrators and teachers. As a team, we identified gaps in student learning, concepts that required further teaching to foster deeper connections, and critically designed a plan to become responsive to student needs in relation to their overall understanding and performance in mathematics. We use current levels of achievement, trends over the last few years, report card marks, PAT results, Tell Them From Me survey comments, and performance evidence of understanding from student work to gain a well-rounded view of the situation. We decided to strengthen our teaching techniques in mathematics to build strong foundational skills and attitudes in the early educational years of our students, which will directly impact their abilities in relation with provincial and global expectations. We put many supports in place to achieve our school development goals. Teachers attended many PD sessions geared around the use of new manipulatives purchased by the school. Our math specialists led these PD sessions as a way to share and acquire teaching strategies related to hands-on manipulatives. They focused on building capacity in using formative assessment strategies to be more responsive to the student needs in a timely fashion in regard to mathematical understanding. Teachers also had access to professional resources and online articles to increase their knowledge on topics that they were interested in or sought to improve upon. Through professional development and training, the teachers were able to build meaningful mathematical tasks that mirror real-world problems and uses.
For this year, we had one really big task to do. That was to design a Lurford Library, because we want to help everybody in our community. Our task had a lot of math, just like the real builders in the world. We used a lot of measurement, and we had a couple of tries. Millimeters won't work because they're too small, and meters were too big. So instead, we used centimeters for our prototype. But we realized that we couldn't make a prototype super big, just like the real thing, so we divided it. Things weren't going so smoothly with our roof, but we got some feedback from Ms. DeLuca and from the Louis Real students. One of them was named David. And how we fixed our roof was, we did a square with two triangles, and this time we made it equal. And so now both sides are equal, and it looks better.
Students were required to use their knowledge of basic skills, adapt them to new learning environments, and work together as a team. By developing lessons and tasks that center on these skills and processes, we are honing critical employability traits that are important in today's job market. The math mentor teacher and learning leaders collaborated with the Galileo Educational Network to develop PD centered on teacher responsiveness and adaptive expertise in relation to student learning. Teachers became more diligent in planning lessons that were explicit, scaffolded, and responsive to the student needs. As a staff, we became mindful that targeted feedback was timely, actionable to implement independently, and accountable for by the students. We continued to divide grade-six students into homogeneous groupings for math instruction based on the success of the one-time funding initiative plan from the previous year. Overall, student disposition towards mathematics increased along with the number of students who achieved excellence on the grade-six math portion of the PATs. This year, teachers assessed multiple baseline assessments of student skills in mathematics and created flexible groupings that fluidly changed over time based on student needs. The model was extended to include the grade-three classes this year. Baseline data was collected from the various components of the SLAs. Students were sorted into groups, and planning was purposely crafted and delivered to the students to target their needs. We will review year-end data and decide if we had the same impact as last year. Moving forward with the analysis, we will decide whether or not homogeneous groupings are effective enough to carry into next year. We are moving away from a one-size-fits-all approach in teaching and are actively trying to make each interaction with students meaningful in the context of their work. The measure of our success in this endeavor is the lasting change we inspire in students to both effectively seek and implement feedback as a way to continually improve their work at school and throughout their lives. Ms. Mao, our Vice Principal, will now talk about the work that we've done over the past few years, but very specifically this year.
Good afternoon. So one of the things that we talked about in our video was how we scaffolded to meet student needs. And we had regrouped the students from an entire grade level to meet their learning needs relating to numeracy. This regrouping continues at our school, but within each classroom now. So we're not regrouping a whole class or whole grade. We're regrouping in the classroom. Teachers are responding to the needs of their students and create dynamic groupings which can change even within a lesson so that each student is supported or challenged according to their abilities, prior knowledge, or skill set. Students are also placed in random groupings to allow for students to learn from each other, as well as share their thoughts, ideas, and mathematical reasoning. In the fall of 2016, we learned that the grade-six students would be expected to complete Part A computation as part of Alberta Education's Achievement Testing Program. With this information, the grade-six team designed and delivered a plan to support student achievement and to prepare students for this type of assessment. So the grade-six team and the math mentor decided to gather data about the students' abilities and skills when completing this 15-question numerical response using the four operations with whole numbers and decimal numbers. So our results showed us that 32 students, or 52% of our students, were achieving below standard. And 24 were at the acceptable standard, and within that group, six students were at the excellent standard, representing 10% of our student population. So we got to work. Teachers worked together to analyze the Part A questions and identified which operations needed further attention in order to build the students' capacity in computation. A plan was designed to focus specifically on one learning intention in a five-to-nine-day period of lessons. For example, the learning intention was students will solve a problem involving division of a whole number by a one-digit divisor. Many lessons involving direct teaching, skills practice, games, and authentic problems were designed and delivered to the students. This focus would take about 10 to 15 minutes of the math lesson. Teachers then created their own Part A assessment for students to complete after that teaching period. Responses were analyzed, and then the cycle would repeat with new learning intentions and a new focus. So with this targeted support, students had the opportunity for focusing on one-on-one learning with the outcome of repeated exposure and time to use and apply the skill. Their strategies to solve problems grew more effective and efficient over time. Students were also taught to analyze their errors in order to identify what they were doing incorrectly. This analysis was completed with a partner. This math talk was beneficial to their growth in computation as students articulated their thinking and their reasoning. So then June 2017, 67 students wrote the provincial achievement test, and we had continued the cycle all the way through May. Our students' confidence and skill grew. 51 of the 67 students achieved the acceptable standard. So that went from a 39% to a 76% of students achieving the standard. 48% of our students achieved the standard of excellence, which was a significant growth from the 10% of students achieving excellence in January. This targeted, decision-driven data collection and focused teaching was a tremendous success, and we're continuing with this model this year as well with our grade-six students. The numeracy focus for our school development plan this year is that students will increase their mathematical reasoning to analyze and solve problems. We continue to help students build personal strategies and learn standard algorithms or efficient strategies to complete computational tasks. Teachers are working together to plan instruction and design authentic math problems to help students achieve greater success in problem-solving. So we're doing this through layered support, starting with our professional learning communities, and teachers meet weekly or biweekly to look at student work and plan the next steps for instruction. Four teachers are part of the math cohort, and we meet and then plan professional development for the staff. Our school was a recipient of two of the Classroom Improvement Funding Grants, and these funds were used to have two math consultants come into the school and provide modeling and strategies to our teachers. One teacher is part of the CBE Math Research Cohort, and our school shares a CBE Math Coach with two other schools, and she works with our students and our teachers daily. Students also have access to a variety of math manipulatives which were purchased through funding from SIF grants, the Parent Council, and school funds. Our students are engaged in problem-solving through a new resource called ThinkTanks. All of these supports will continue to help both our students and teachers grow in their understanding of numeracy. I have a few students right now who are going to demonstrate one of the games that we use to build our procedural fluency.
So the dice I have here are eight-sided dice. They have the numbers one to eight. These dice are normal six-sided dice, but they have the digits zero to five, so we can target very specifically the different basic facts that we may be working on. So girls, let's start with, Elizabeth and I will work with these. How about let's play Finding the Sum. What's under my thumb? Okay, so what are we looking for when we're finding the sum?
Addition.
Okay, so we're going to work on some addition. So I'm going to get Elizabeth to look away because there's so many cues. We roll the dice. Students would do this in pairs. I'm going to give her a challenging one. And I have to find the sum, and I cover one. So seven is my sum. What's under my thumb?
Four.
Louder.
Four.
She got it. All right, girls, why don't you show them with the eight-sided dice, okay? Neha's going to look away.
Seven is my sum. What's under my thumb?
Three.
Oh, we have similar numbers. I think these girls need more of a challenge. How about looking for the product? What are we looking for then? All right, are we ready to do that? Okay, so same strategy. So the students would all be sitting, working with dice. They could be recording their work or just creating small challenges for each other. All right, Elizabeth, ready? Just zero, great demonstration. All right, let's, okay. Twenty is my product. What's the missing factor?
Four.
Got it. That's good job. Do you guys want to try those ones? Okay, let's see. Let's try that one together. Okay, ready? Nice and loud.
Four is my product. What's under my thumb?
She got it. She said one. I know their voices are soft. So there's just a very quick demonstration of some of the ways we use these, and this might be just a three-to-six-minute part of the lesson. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for giving us an opportunity this afternoon to showcase Grant McEwen School.
So Director Yee, Principal McPherson, Vice Principal Mao, and Mrs. Fong, and students, thank you so much for demonstrating what you are learning in school. We don't get many opportunities to be in school and see how teaching happens, so it's really great when we can experience that here in the boardroom. So thank you so much for your participation, and I know that some of you are a little nervous today, but you guys were awesome. You did great. Thanks for coming today.
See, math is really fun. I keep on telling everyone this. Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of Results II academic success. So last week, the trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding the report, and the report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the Chief Superintendent is making reasonable progress with the provisions of Results II. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in this results area. The board has previously approved the reasonable interpretation of this results policy, which has set the stage for effective monitoring of actual organizational performance. I would like to remind trustees that today our job is to determine whether or not the report provides sufficient evidence that the CBE has made reasonable progress towards achieving the results, and to build a portfolio of chief superintendent performance in the results half of the chief superintendent's job expectations. I would now turn it over to trustees to make any motions regarding this report.
I would like to move that the board has reviewed the monitoring report on Results II academic success and concludes that reasonable progress is being made toward the ultimate achievement of this results policy.
Do trustees have any questions regarding the motion? Any amendments to the motion? Trustee Herdlicka?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make an amendment to the motion, that the motion be amended by the addition of, with the exception of First Nations, Métis, Inuit students, achievement in all academic disciplines.
Thank you. Do any trustees have any questions regarding the amendment? Trustee Herdlicka, would you like to open debate on your amendment?
I'd like to start by giving a shout-out to Isaiah by acknowledging land and territory today. That was wonderful to see. As I was preparing for this, I looked at the most recent accountability pillar, and for the last three years that I've been on the board, I have brought this issue forward. And what we're seeing is our Indigenous students continuing to struggle in their learning, and we have got to highlight this. and we have got to highlight this. This year dropout rates have increased, high school completion, we're seeing issues with that, PAT at an acceptable rate, diploma participation, and quite honestly, the list goes on. What was really troubling for me is I looked back in the last five years at our First Nation, our Indigenous students, and I found that we're seeing this fluctuation that's happening. It's a trend that one year it's up, depending, doesn't, whatever issue you're talking about, whether it's dropout rates or high school completion, one year it's up, the next year it's down. It could be down two points, up four points, down two points, and it's just this constant lack of stability and sustainability that's happening. And that shows to me that there certainly is a bigger issue at hand, but it also leaves me with this issue. If I was a parent of an Indigenous student, and the scores for those students continued to be so low compared to our other students, in some cases, 40% lower, this is an issue. And this is an issue, actually, that I think our board has to take on full force. We have the Indigenous strategy, and by no way am I questioning the incredible work of our staff and our students and our parents to be involved in this, but I really think we need something that is going to shake this up. We have good intentions, and we're trying to create something stronger throughout the system, but we're doing it in a way that is very Western. And so I am deeply concerned this year that, again, we're back at this place where we're not moving that needle. It's not moving. It might be one step forward, but there's two steps back, and so I'm bringing this forward because we have to address this, and I feel good about the things and proud of the things that are happening in our system, but just because I feel proud about it doesn't mean we're doing the right thing. And we're actually, our work here is to look at the numbers and how our kids are doing, and they're not doing well. So I'm opening this up to the board and interested in getting some feedback.
You have two seconds left. Any other trustees wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Davis?
I appreciate trustee Hirdlicka in bringing this motion forward and do agree that this is an area of concern for the entire board, and will support the amendment.
Oh, it's really hard to go after that speech. As trustee Hirdlicka said, this has been an area that the board has been concerned about for years, and that I know that our administration is also concerned about, our staff is concerned about, and I think our province is concerned about, our country. This is something that we all need to work together on as a society, and we do need to ensure that we have the supports necessary in place and that we continue to identify this as an area of board concern, so that as we're developing our budget priorities, as we're developing our three-year education plans, that this continues to remain a top priority for this board. Trustee Hirdlicka, would you like to close? Okay. Can I call a question on the amendment? All those in favor? And that is unanimous, so we're now back to the main motion with trustee Hirdlicka's amendment. Are there any further amendments to the motion? Trustee Davis?
I would propose to amend the motion, that the motion be amended by the addition of, and student results in mathematics.
Thank you. Do any trustees have any questions regarding the amendment to the motion? Trustee Davis, would you like to open debate?
When we review the report, Results II Monitoring Follow-Up Report, November 2017, it demonstrates that the targets for all three areas of math were not met for the 2016-17 school year. And in 2016, those motions of concern were passed for grade six PATs for the standard of excellence, grade nine PATs at the acceptable standard, and grade nine K&amp;E at the acceptable standard. And since then, the results for these indicators has either declined or not improved. We know that CBE staff are devoting significant resources in terms of time and funding to improving the math program in recognition of the importance of improving math results for our students. When we further look at the report summary of the 2016-17 provincial achievement test given to the board on November 7th, we see the following. Math grade six acceptable results are the lowest level since 2010 and have shown consecutive declines since 2014. Math grade six excellent scores are also at the lowest level since 2010 and have dropped from 17% in 2013 to 14.3 in 2016. Math grade nine results are at the second lowest rate since 2010 and are lower than the provincial average for the first time in the last seven years. Math grade nine K&amp;E acceptable results are the lowest level since 2009 and are 8.2% lower than the provincial average as well. And in this regard, I believe the board must conclude that reasonable progress has not been made.
Thank you, trustee Davis. Any trustees wish to enter first round of debate? Well, I can't pass up an opportunity to talk about math. During our presentation last week, administration did identify math as an area of concern. We heard that the province has also identified it as an area of concern. Results across the province have been declining for the past few years, and we are no exception to that. If you look at our report card results as well, math is the area where, according to teacher report cards, that's the area where students are finding the most challenge as well. So I think between the evidence of report cards and Accountability Pillar results, trends across the province, I think that the board has an opportunity to be a leader in the province around math, and that we should be taking every opportunity that we can in order to move this work forward. Can I call a question? All those in favor of the amendment? And that is unanimous. So are there any further amendments that trustees wish to make? Trustee Davis?
The amendment I propose is that the Board of Trustees identifies a concern with grade nine English Language Arts results.
Okay, that's not amendment to the main motion, that's a separate motion. That's okay. We can get to that motion soon. So that, although that motion was read into the record, that will be tabled until we finish dealing with the main motion. Are there any further amendments to the main motion of reasonable progress? Okay, so we have a main motion with two amendments. Trustee Hare, would you like to open debate?
I'll close, okay?
Any trustees wish to enter first round of debate? So over the past few months, I think this board has received a lot of information around student results. We've received standardized testing data, we've received report card information results, we've received student survey results, and the board had previously approved indicators and targets that would be the determination of reasonable progress. I think in the vast majority of the cases, those targets were met. We already identified the two exceptions in our motion, so I think the standard for reasonable progress has been made, and I will be in support of the motion. Any other trustees for first round?
So we're supporting the motion, and similar to trustee Hirdman, we have reports put in place, and we have indicators that are there for our staff to look to and to achieve and to show us that the work that they're doing within the system is hitting those indicators. And for me, that has been, we've, again, we've notified, brought notice to the two exceptions there. And I will say, you know, throughout the system, when I'm able to go into schools and see what our students are learning, like we saw today, I really am blown away. I gotta tell you, there's some really incredible things happening in our schools, and our students are thinking critically. Their confidence level is inspiring. What I see happening in education is very different than what I saw 25 years ago. The idea of looking at each and every kid has totally changed the landscape of how our students feel and our students' ability to learn in the classroom. So I really appreciate the work that's been done in our system around R2, and again, I will be supporting the motion around that.
Any other trustees for first round of debate? Second round. Trustee Davis?
While the primary debate is around the exceptions on this motion, I do think it's important to acknowledge all the good results and high results and improving results that we have seen over the past year in many of our subject areas. And I think there is no doubt that the, there are lots of oars rowing the boat and working together, not only with teachers and with staff, but also with parents and with students. There is great things ahead for us, including in the areas that we've identified. So I just wanted to acknowledge the work that we know happens in our schools every day, and certainly, as parents are very grateful for that work.
Anyone else for second round? Trustee Hare, would you like to close?
Thank you, Chair Herbert. I think all of us at this point in time are probably spending a little bit of time on television watching the Olympic Games, and where you see the motto, faster, higher, stronger. And I think when I take a look at these results, I can't help but get the same feeling. We ask this of our students all the time, to do better, to learn more. And I think on the whole, these, this report indicates that's exactly what is happening in the Calgary Public School District. On a similar vein, we saw Grant McEwen School present today and how by focusing with 60 students, they were able to make a significant impact. Now, obviously, the challenge we face with 122,000 students is slightly more onerous, but clearly, we have the possibility to continue, to continue working on the successes that we have made. I certainly support this motion.
Thank you, trustee Hare. Can I call a question? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Do any trustees have any further motions?
So the motion I'd like to bring forward is that the Board of Trustees identifies concern with grade nine English Language Arts results.
Do any trustees have any questions regarding the motion? Trustee Davis, would you like to open debate?
So when we look at the report summary of the 2016-17 PAT and diploma exam results, we note the following on the grade nine English Language Arts data. The current achievement levels of 76.2% achieving acceptable is the lowest level achieved since 2010-11 results, and there have been declines in five out of the last six consecutive years. And the current acceptable standard is the first time that CBE has fallen below the provincial average. And this is, we have also seen a decline in results at the excellence level since 2011 and '12, and the standard of excellence level is also below the provincial average for the second year in a row. So when we contrast that to the grade six acceptable standard achievement, which has typically been in the mid-'80s for the last few years, that 10% decline over three years is a concern.
As trustee Davis was pointing out, our results at the grade six level tend to be significantly above the province, but our grade nine results have always been very close to the province, and this year, as mentioned, it did fall below. We know that literacy and English Language Arts are core foundational skill for our students, and I think it is incumbent upon us to recognize these trends, especially when it comes to core subjects such as English Language Arts and math. Any other trustees for first round? Second round. Trustee Hirdlicka?
I think when these reports come to us and we see numbers for one year, sometimes people get really excited about seeing those one numbers, maybe a change, an increase or a decrease, but it's really important, as trustee Davis has pointed out, to look at the trends that are happening. And you can't just take one year as being, you know, that the sky is falling or that there's real issues, but looking at those trends over three years, I think, is really, really important. And it's important and part of our job to be flagging those things and to bringing light to those, shining a light on those things, and so because of that, I will be supporting this motion.
Do any other trustees wish to enter round two? Trustee Davis, would you like to close?
I know when I look at this number, and I look at the provincial average, and I think about 24% is a very high number of students who are not achieving success in Alberta. And I think that the concern that we have, and going back to the comment somebody made earlier, I think it was the chair, about being a leader in this area, and I think the CBE has an opportunity to take a leadership role in literacy and raising the bar and raising the level of conversation around this at a provincial level as well.
Thank you. Can I call the question? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Are there any... Are there any further motions? Trustee Dennis?
With the chair's permission, I have three motions in this regard. Thank you.
Would you like, are you gonna read all three of them right now?
Yes, I'd like to read them all now. That the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the indicators for R2 academic success for board reaffirmation or approval by October 31, 2018. That the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the targets for R2 academic success for board approval by November 30, 2018. That the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to provide additional information, including strategies, revised targets, and the assessment of the strategies for each of the areas identified as an exception or concern by November 30, 2018.
So there were three motions there. I believe trustees have the wordings of all those motions already. Do trustees wish to debate these motions together or separately? Together is okay? Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding the motions? Trustee Hurdlicka?
I might have a question for the chief superintendent in regards to the dates and the timeline that's been laid out here. Wondering if this is adequate, achievable for the system, for you to take on?
Thank you, Chair Hurdman and trustee Hurdlicka, as well as all trustees. These dates are very difficult for us. We've had significant conversation with respect to the third motion, providing additional information, including strategies, revised targets for November 30, 2018. That is a doable date. It will mean some shifting of priorities that the board will have to support us in, but that is a doable date. For the other two motions with respect to October 31 and a November 30 date, those dates are very problematic, particularly October. October is when we receive our provincial results and when our schools start their development, school development planning based on those results or are into that. And that is a very time-consuming time for our staff. It also moves us towards the annual educational results report. So what I would ask for the board to consider is that both those dates be moved into February, particularly the second one, that we would revise those, reviewing the targets when we are working with the existing monitoring report in February. So if the board would consider February for the first two, and the third one, doable with some consideration to other things that we might have to change.
So based on this information, does any trustee wish to make an amendment to the motion?
Chair Hurdman, what I would add is that both those processes would involve the board themselves, and we need that time to be involved together in that work.
So if an amendment is not made, then the original dates stand? Trustee Hurdlicka?
So I'd like to make an amendment that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the indicators for R2 academic success for board reaffirmation or approval by the end of February 28, 2018. Oh, 2019, thank you. And that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the targets for R2 academic success for board approval by February 28, 2019.
So right now, we are just debating the amendment, which is the dates. We are not debating the rest of the substance of the motion. So trustee Hurdlicka, would you like to open debate around changing of the dates?
Sure. I appreciate the comments from the chief. For me, I've been through the process of looking at indicators for our policies, and that work is a lot of work in order to really get to the meat of what we want from, and what we expect from our system. So that's a lot of time together as trustees with administration, going through those indicators, understanding them, and then, are they good enough? And then looking to ones potentially that we think will give us more information about what's happening with our kids. And so it really is quite a process to go through that. And so for me, taking the time to do it and to do it right, I think, is really important rather than rushing that process. And I think we also have to remember that when we, policies are evolving, they're ever-evolving. And for us to take the time to let them evolve, as things are changing in our schools, in our communities, I think that's also really important. Jumping into this stuff for a big system like the CBE, I don't think is the right direction for us. So I hope, I'm looking forward to hearing what other trustees say, think about this, but I'll leave that to you now.
Any trustees wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Dennis?
I would like to thank the chief for suggesting those alterations to the date and for the comments that trustee Hurdlicka has made. As a new trustee, certainly, I appreciate the expertise of the people around me. I do have a bit of a concern, and I guess maybe someone can help me understand, to alleviate some of my concern here, but delaying until February 2019, I feel as though that that also just delays the way that we are monitoring these results, and this is our most important work. And I do think that we need to have, you know, the indicators and the, and the targets aligned with current board priorities. And so if you could just help me understand a little bit more about the process and what impact, or, you know, is there then a delay? Am I anticipating a delay that doesn't exist, I guess, in terms of having these things applied to our work?
Certainly, that was a point of information towards the chief.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis. I would ask that acting superintendent, Dr. Mosher respond.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis. So regardless of whether the work happened in October 2018 or February 2019, the timing at which the board would receive information on any possible new indicators would be the same. So once we're into a school year, we are still gathering data based on the previously approved indicators. So in either of these cases, we would not begin gathering new data until 2019, '20.
Thank you.
Trustee Davis?
Well, I appreciate there's a lot of work to be done in changing the indicators. I struggle with the thought that we would delay that work for a year from today's date. And I think that that timeline simply not reflect the urgency and the expectation of parents and the public that have, with, with issues that have been raised that are critical. And I would like to think that the board, with its size and resources, with administration and with the trustees working together, that we can meet the original deadlines, which I would suggest are the outside dates we should be considering.
I agree that this is our, the most important work that this board will probably do after hiring a new chief superintendent, is how we monitor our academic results in our system. These are huge conversations. There's huge context around data. There's understanding how, what is appropriate ways to analyze data, what are inappropriate ways, what data is telling us versus what it's not telling us. And this will involve a lot of conversations. I appreciate trustee Dennis bringing up these motions, because I think that it's an important conversation to have. With regards to the timing, I agree that these conversations should be happening sooner rather than later. The, but as our administration said, it would make no difference towards how the report next February would be coming forward. Now, having said that, I do think as a board, we need to be having these discussions soon so that as our new student information system comes into place for September, we know that the kind of data that we want to be looking at, we want to know how we're going to be looking at it. So that as they're developing that system, they know what kind of reports that they want to be bringing forward. So even if we have a February deadline for the final report, I think these conversations, and that will be up to us as a discipline, to discipline ourselves as a board to be working on this, because I would like to have a pretty good idea by the end of June so that we know going into next year what we should be looking at. And so even though all the final details or touches or everything might not be done until February, I think that as trustees, we need to commit to moving this work forward and having these conversations. Any other trustees for debate? Trustee Hare?
I will support the amendment for a couple of reasons. One, I certainly respect the advice of the chief superintendent in regard to these timelines. Secondly, I just have a minor concern about the word "review" and exactly what review means. I assume it indicates that there is some concern with what we presently have. However, the term "review" allows a certain leeway. There's nothing to say that the recommendations might not come back, that we keep the ones that we have. Now, in light of that, as some of the previous speakers have said, we, we need to commence this conversation almost immediately, and that may reflect as to the outcome therein. But nonetheless, I will support the amendment as put forward.
Anyone else for first round? Trustee Hurdlicka, would you like to close?
Appreciate the discussion on that. Like, it's been mentioned, this is really, really important work. And I think the fact that we've got five new trustees on the board, you're taking a lot in. And there's a lot of understanding and processing and putting pieces together and connecting dots. And what I really am looking forward to is having those conversations with trustees and administration about those dots connecting and how we can strengthen this work and, in order to support our kids. So I think that doing it in February and listening to our chief in regards to that is really, really important and to guide us on this. And it gives us that time to really work with staff and understand the process and also understand what we're actually creating. So I will end it there, and I do appreciate the discussion on this.
So trustees will now be voting on the amendment, whether or not to change the dates for two of those motions to February 28, 2019. All those in favor? And that is trustees Bradshaw, Hurdlicka, Hare, Adams, Dennis, and Hurdman. All those opposed? Trustee Davis? The motion is carried. We now move back to the main motions. Are there any further questions on the main motion? Motions, I guess. Okay, trustee Dennis, would you like to open debate?
As been said a couple of times, we know that this is important work, and because this is largely a new board, I think it's really important that this board understands, supports, and has input on the indicators and targets that our students' progress are being measured against. It also gives this board the opportunity to ensure that the indicators and targets are aligned with our current priorities.
Thank you, trustee Dennis. Anyone for first round of debate? As trustee Dennis said, and as I alluded to before, this is very important work of the board. Right now, I know sometimes when a new board comes forward, especially with five new board members, they might feel constrained by decisions made by previous boards. And I think in something as important as the indicators and targets for results to academic success, that this board needs to own them. So in response to trustee Hare's question before about the word "review," the motion does talk about reaffirmation or approval. So we do have the option of sticking with what we have, but we also have the option of changing it. But I think that no matter what we choose, this board needs to own these indicators, and this board needs to own these targets. And these will require a lot of conversations with our administration and a lot of developing our understanding also as a board, our capacity as a board to understand what these indicators mean, what this data means. So I'm looking forward to having those conversations. Any other trustees for first round?
So I'll be supporting the motion. And, you know, what I learned through the process of, of understanding our indicators and going through that process of OEs, was it also helped me understand governance and the idea of governance. And, because it is a, is a, is a challenging thing to wrap your head around. But it was actually through these discussions with the indicators, with our OEs, that I was able to further understand the importance of the work that we do here at the board and why governance, we have this structure here. So I, I look forward to that opportunity, any opportunity that we can to give, especially our new trustees, to understand governance and why it's important for a board, a school board, but also a board at this level, I think, is, is really an opportunity that we need to jump at.
Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Dennis, would you like to close?
I would just like to thank fellow trustees for their comments in this regard, and I look forward to starting the work.
Well, I haven't called the question yet. So all trustees in favor of the motions? And that is unanimous. Are there any other motions come forward? Trustee Davis? Trustee Davis?
So I'd like to propose that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to provide an update on the progress of the math strategy by April 30th, 2018.
Thank you, trustee Davis. Trustee Hurdleka?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. That the motion be amended by the addition of the Indigenous Education Strategy and the Literacy Strategy by April 30th, 2018. That was a little Star Trek-y or something.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, so we will now be debating the amendment. So with the addition of the Indigenous Education Strategy and the Literacy Strategy. So trustee Davis?
Sorry, just a point of information. The Literacy Strategy for Indigenous or for the entire?
That the motion be amended by the addition of the Indigenous Education Strategy and the Literacy Strategy? Three strategies? By April 30th, 2018?
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering if trustee Davis wanted to take this as a friendly amendment, or if we wanted to debate them all separately?
I'll take it as a friendly amendment.
Okay, then we are back to the main motion, which includes the friendly amendments. So are there any questions regarding the motion? Trustee Hurdleka?
I guess my question, similar to what I asked before to the chief superintendent about the timeline, how does that work for the system?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hurdleka and trustees, the three reports are certainly doable by the April 30th timeline. Again, I think that I have always stressed that we have limited staff, and they are in fact staff who typically spend most of their time in schools. It will mean that we will be drawing them out to do these reports. I would also ensure that trustees' expectations are appropriate. There will be very little significant new student data in that short time period. So it will be about the inputs and the activities that we are undertaking. But yes, we can do those three reports by April 30th if the board wishes.
Any further questions on the motion? Trustee Hurdleka?
I guess I have a pointed question. So I think, I appreciate that you wanting that clarity there. Is that something, when we talk about updates, that we need some clear guidelines in that? That expectations are very clear on what we're going to be receiving, and that might be included in the motion?
I believe the chief superintendent has already provided the board with what he expects to be providing. So if the board wants something different than what the chief superintendent has said, then the, then that would need to be in the motion. But right now, on the record, we have what the expectation is, so I don't think we need to change the wording of the motion. Trustee Davis, would you like to open debate?
We know that staff have been working hard since the fall to improve math outcomes for our students. We know there's agreement that math needs to be improved, and that the math strategy is an important part of the work that we're doing. And so in that regard, the board needs an update on the implementation of the math strategy for this school year, including how the monitoring will take place. And I think it's important to note that the math strategy was funded out of a one-time allocation of board reserves. And good communication on the implementation of this program will help inform the board about how this fits in with our three-year education plan beyond the current school
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Adams?
I would just like to say, I was actually at a parent council meeting this morning, and they actually asked me very specifically about the math strategy, and how it was coming, and how it was rolling out. So I think this is, I will be supporting this motion for sure, and I think it's coming at a good time, because parents do want to know, even if it's not very specific details. Clearly, the group that I spoke to today wanted to know where we're at. So I think that's great.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Hurdleka?
To just confirm, we're looking at the three strategies right now. Yeah, okay. I know we kind of changed root. No, it's all, it's all good. So I just, you know, these strategies are important work for our system. We've prioritized it, we're focused on it, and we've committed a lot of resources and supports to it. So I think getting updates on how it's going, and maybe what we're learning or seeing, I think is really, really important. And to trustee Adams' point, to be able to share, you know, what is actually taking place with those strategies, so we can better inform and engage our parents on what's, what's going on and why we have prioritized these areas and, and the movement that's being made. So I think this is all really important and good stuff for our system to be telling
Trustee Bradshaw?
I'm a little torn on this one, because I, it feels like we're going to get a report on what we're doing instead of how we're doing. So we're not getting maybe the results we're after. So we're pulling resources away from the actual work that's being done to put them towards just finding out what we're doing. So yeah, I'll be, I'll think about this one for the next rounds.
Any other trustees for first round? Well, I agree that these are areas that the board has identified as being their priorities, and that it is important that the board receive regular updates on the progress of these strategies that are in response to board-identified areas of concern. So I will be supporting the motion. We move into second round? Trustee Hurdleka?
I just want to say that I like that comment by trustee Bradshaw, because I think it's really important to highlight, you know, what we're looking for, why this is, this is important. And I think ultimately, and also the recognition that, you know, we only have so many staff and resources to go around. And I think that's a really important discussion that we have to continue to have as we're asking our staff to do the things that we're asking them to do for us. In saying that, even though that was a really good point, I also really believe that, again, back to the priorities that we have focused in on as a system, this is, this is what we've prioritized for our work. So getting this information and keeping us moving along with us and updated on this is, is really important.
Any further trustees for second round? Trustee Dennis?
I would also just add a comment that I do think it's timely that we're taking a look at these things now as we're, we have allocated resources in this area, and we do have budget conversations that are coming up. So I think this is important information for us to have, as we are going to be considering budget soon and what implications that might have on our budget.
Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Davis, would you like to close? Can I call the question? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Are there any further motions to come forward? Trustee Davis?
I move that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to provide the following reports for the public board meeting on March 20th, 2018. First report, grade six and nine math PAT results by school for the last three years, including the results for Part A and B portions, following the format used by Alberta Education. Second is Math 30-1 and Math 30-2, results by school for the past three years, including the school-awarded mark and the diploma mark, the difference between the two marks and the diploma exam participation rate. And the third one is the grade six and nine English Language Arts PAT results by school for the past three years, including the results for the reading and writing portions as per the reports used by Alberta Education.
Thank you, trustee Davis. Are there any questions regarding the motion? Trustee Hurdleka?
So go back to the chief and ask about timelines for this particular request.
Chair Hurdman to trustees, if I understand the motion correctly, so I would just ask for clarification, the date was March 20th. So again, trustees, we are trying our very best to support these motions and to provide them in a timely manner. I do not believe that we have the staff or the resources to meet that particular timeline. If the board decides this information, excuse me, is necessary, it's a very labor-intensive, manual process. And I do not believe that we would be able to make that March 20th timeline. And in fact, I would suggest that end of April, and that we would have to reallocate significant resources to compile this information. That is, and I can be corrected, in formats available already on the Alberta Education website, but the timeline is very problematic on this one.
Are there any further questions regarding the motion? Are there any possible amendments to the motion? Trustee Hare?
I would move that the date be changed to April 30th. Let it go.
So you would like to change it to by April 30th, 2018? Would you take that as a friendly amendment, or?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion that has been amended for the date to April 30th, 2018. Are there any further questions regarding the motion? Trustee Davis, would you like to open debate?
As the board looks forward to the upcoming school year, it's important that it has the information it needs to review the strengths and opportunities within the system. A school-by-school breakdown allows us to determine the nature of the strengths and weaknesses. Are they widespread, locally concentrated? Is the improvement or decline concentrated in a small number of schools? And what have the trend lines been over the last three-year period? And I'm struck by a comment, whether it was the principal or the teacher in the presentation today that talked about targeted decision-driven data. And this motion is really, speaks to, to that part of the data that I think we need to look at. And in particular, in the PATs and math, they now have a Part A and Part B portion for grade six. And in particular, the Part A provides a snapshot of basic skills that students need in order to be successful in the higher grades. And similarly, the PATs in English Language Arts have a reading and writing portion. And again, this information allows the board to see where strengths and weaknesses are in these two areas over a three-year time period. As we look to ensure that we are well-informed for our decision-making for the upcoming year, looking at this data will be important to understanding the current situation of our students, and will help inform the board on these two critical pieces of the three-year
Thank you, trustee Davis. Any trustees like to enter debate? Trustee Hurdleka?
So I look at this information, and I think it's, some of this information, we've had some discussions with trustees minimally. I actually think we're going to be delving into these kinds of discussions as we explore R2, and talk about those indicators, and what we're looking for, and what we want to hear and learn about the system. And so I think it's actually, that opportunity through those, looking at the indicators, maybe creating new indicators, this will be part of the discussion. The second piece I think that's really important to look at is that information has, has been noted by the chief and trustee Davis, that that information is already available, a lot of that information. So I look forward to having the discussion through R2 on this, this information. The last piece I'd just like to say is around, we've heard from the chief, that, again, resources, time, of our staff. I think we could have some great collaboration, working on this together over the next, you know, eight months to a year, and, and really finding out what we want in this information through our results.
Any other trustees for first round?
I think that the items brought up here by, by trustee Davis are, certainly would be a very valuable part of a much larger discussion. Again, as we're looking at the R2 academic results. And so I also think as a board that we have some learning to do around what data is available, and, and how that can be useful to us, and, and sort of how the data that is available, how that can be interpreted for our use. And so I, I, I like the, I like the starting point that we have here, but I would like to see that as part of a much larger discussion when we're looking at R2.
Any other trustees for round one? Sorry, I was thinking part one of the PATs. So in looking at the information requested, I mean, this is actually information that I've downloaded myself from the Alberta Education website and, and looked at. So this is all information that is publicly available, that trustees can really access anytime they want to. When we have 200 and, over 240 schools, looking at all of this data and trying to make sense of it in a systematic and comprehensive way is going to be the subject of the discussions that we're going to be having going forward when we talk about when we talk about our indicators. I would also like to know that with regards to the new Part A of the math PAT, that will be interesting data going forward, but currently we only have a single year's worth of data. There's no baseline data at all with regards to that. So there's actually no conclusions that we can really make based on that data at this time. And I do think we need to figure out how we're going to be looking at this data going forward, if we want to be doing it on a school-by-school basis, if we want to be doing it by demographics of students, if we want, how do we want to be looking at student data across our system? I think these are larger conversations. And because this information is already publicly available, I will not be supporting the motion. Any trustees for round one? Round two? Trustee Davis, would you like to close?
So when we look at these reports, I view them as fairly basic reports and certainly agree that there will be a larger conversation that occurs. But I think the other thing to keep in mind is that the reports are not only for the use of the Board, but also for, to help inform parents and the public. And so it's important that those conversations occur in tandem with the work that the Board's going to be doing over the next year as we work to our indicators for next February.
Can I call the question? Those in favor? Trustee Bradshaw, Trustee Davis, and Trustee Adams, all those opposed? Trustee Hirdlicka, Trustee Hare, Trustee Dennis, and Trustee Chair Hurdman? And so the motion does not carry. Are there any other motions coming out of this report? Seeing none, and seeing that it's 1:30, I think we will take a 10-minute break before we continue along with our agenda. So if everyone could come back for 1:40, that would be great. Thank you. So next on our agenda is a Board Development Session on Partnerships. Chief Superintendent, would you please introduce this matter?
Thank you, Chair Hurdman and trustees. I truly believe that today will be a very special presentation in the sense of the importance of partnerships to virtually every student in our public education system. As stated in our three-year education plan, everyone contributes to the success of public education. Partnerships play an essential part in this success. Today, we are pleased to bring to you a Board Development Session that highlights how our students are impacted every single day by the many and varied partnerships that the Calgary Board of Education is proud to be part of. The generosity and active engagement of our partners truly make a difference to our students' ability to learn and to grow and ultimately become the kind of citizens that will do the same for other children in the future. I would ask our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Mojer, to introduce this session.
Chair Hurdman and trustees, the CBE is very fortunate to have hundreds of partnerships at work in CBE schools on any given day. And just as each of our students is unique, each of our partnerships is unique. The thing that connects them is a strong common thread, success for each student. The presentation today is intended to provide insight into how partnerships work hand-in-hand with us to enhance the conditions for the success of each student as they make their journey from kindergarten to high school completion. This overview will build understanding of some of the many types of partnerships that exist, as well as the considerations used to support decisions surrounding new and potential partnerships. Following an introductory video, Director Sheila McLeod and some of her staff will guide us through this presentation. will guide us through this presentation.
Good afternoon Chair Herdman and trustees. We're very pleased today to share with you the specifics of CBE partnerships and how these partnerships impact the learning of our students each and every day. As you saw in the video, this work is extensive and varied. With hundreds of partners, it's difficult to name each one. Therefore, we won't be naming all of our partners, but rather we'll highlight just a few to demonstrate how they support learning. Corporate partnerships work closely with partners to enhance the learning experiences of students. This involves connecting funds, experiences, and expertise so that they have the greatest impact on learning. It also means supporting schools and service units around policies and regulations in their work with partners. Finally, an important part of our work is about stewarding relationships and recognizing contributions. Our partners come from all sectors and range from small targeted supporters to large philanthropic initiatives. They come from the private, corporate, public, and not-for-profit sectors. They include individuals or large agencies. Our corporate partnership specialists work closely with partners, with schools, and service units to ensure that the work aligns with our vision and adheres to our admin regulations and operational expectations. And so, on that note, I would like to introduce to you the specialists who steward this work on a daily basis, Tenille Cooper and Paul Kerber.
Our partners contribute to education in many different ways. Partners invest significant amounts of time through mentorship, expertise, and volunteering. Thanks to our post-secondary partnerships, a number of dual-credit courses are available to high school students who are able to register in post-secondary courses while they are completing high school. The donation of facilities such as theatres, recreation centers, and laboratories means that our students have enhanced experiences to learn and grow outside of the classroom. The CBE also welcomes many services our partners have to offer. These span in all areas from mental health to supporting new Canadians. For example, a number of new immigrant-serving organizations offer programming that assists new immigrants to help them develop basic skills and cultural understandings so they are ready to learn in our schools. Partners interact with the CBE in a variety of different ways. Some include formal partnerships that require written and documentation, and others often are linked to system initiatives and specific programs. Others are relationships that exist at the school level. For example, Canot School has established a relationship with a local restaurant that donates sandwiches to support food insecurities at the school. In contrast, TB Riley School is connected with a large business chain to have necessary resources to purchase lightning and further drama productions. Although all contributions cannot be measured with a dollar amount, last year the CBE received over $5 million in monetary and in-kind donations. Regardless of the type of the donation, corporate partnerships work closely with the donors to ensure that their gifts are distributed to schools based on assessment of where the greatest need exists.
Sometimes, schools request support in navigating their own partnerships. This can mean anything from providing guidance around how the relationship might fit into the three-year plan, to supporting the relationship itself, or helping schools connect to partners in ways that support school-based initiatives. For example, Valley View School expanded this year to include their science program. Corporate partnerships connected the school to TeleSpark Learning Connections, as well as Trek Plug-in-the-Sun, in order to support Valley View in their work. We also provide support to schools to optimize the donations that they receive from the community and best leverage what donors and partners have to offer. Just one example is the Team Giridano Project, where Mark and Lauren Giridano sponsor four of our schools. The project, however, is so much more than funds. Our schools and students have articulated that the relationship has directly impacted citizenship, personal development, character, as well as teaching and learning practices. This short video will outline some of the work with the Team Giridano Project, which is now in its fourth year, and how that partnership enhances student learning.
Kind of descriptive writing about that. Anya, do you want to read it?
The Flames were moving full speed and were sliding with small ice chunks falling out the skates. The Flames had three-goal lead and the fans were disappointed as the Black Cats tied the game. The fans were screaming, "Go Flames, go! Go Flames, go!" Dyo drove towards the net and was rejected. The pups dribbled back and the captain fired up the net. Giridano scores! Mark pounded his chest to celebrate the game winner.
The Team Giridano example illustrates two very important things about our work with partners. First, we always try to help our partners see where their contributions will have the greatest impact, or where their expertise, interest areas, or resources could be expanded. As well, the Team Giridano example shows that our partnerships are deeply tied to every aspect of our results. As our students connect to the greater community, they are developing essential elements of citizenship, personal development, and character. These pictures demonstrate only four of hundreds of examples where our students are able to grow thanks to our work with partners. As we work closely with our partners in schools to ensure that all opportunities are connected to our three-year plan, all of our partners' opportunities have at their core a focus on personalized learning. Whether it be programs beyond the classroom or providing students with what they need to thrive, our partners are about creating conditions for success. While many of our partner programs focus directly on students, others work with teachers so they can build their expertise, skills, and understandings in highly specialized areas.
When we engage with our stakeholders, we build mutual understanding as we appreciate the gifts they bring to our students, and they also understand education in new ways. These relationships allow us to share our values and priorities within the greater community. On a regular basis, superintendents identify larger system needs where enhanced funding is critical to the success of students and programs. Education Matters plays a vital role in addressing these priorities as they engage with the greater community and seek support. These priorities range from providing material resources to schools, to addressing food insecurity, to ensuring that students with limited financial means are not denied access to opportunities. Last year, 159 students received financial support under the burial-removal grant that enabled students to purchase personal protective equipment or work boots, essential for participation in our pipe trades and ironworkers exploratory programs. This grant also supported the transportation and costs associated with 18 other programs. Additionally, in the last three years, 497 students have received Education Matters scholarships and bursaries. Working with the public and our partners is guided by our framework that upholds our core values and work. Equipping our students with tools for learning ranges from receiving a backpack filled with school supplies to having sophisticated equipment such as 3D printers and Loz bots in order to build advanced technology and trade skills.
Providing learning opportunities beyond the classroom and enhancing student experiences happens in many ways in our system. Campus Calgary Open Minds is an example of how that illustrates how two school districts, the CBE and Calgary Catholic, collaborate with members of the broader community to create and sustain 15 extraordinary learning sites. One of these sites is our own Two School, who were in the meeting last week. Students spend a full week in the education at the center exploring big questions and connecting to the community. The Two School site saw over 650 students from 24 schools go through their program last year. This year, Campus Calgary Open Minds celebrates its 25th anniversary of providing Calgary students opportunity to move their classes into the community. Over these 25 years, Campus Calgary Open Minds sites have seen over 110,000 students and over 4,000 teachers attend programming. Each site provides unique opportunities for personalized learning with dynamic... Each site provides unique opportunities for personalized learning with the community and a chance to take up real-world issues in dynamic settings. One new pilot site is Seed School at the Mustard Seed here in the Beltline. Listening to stories of a resident or guest of the Mustard Seed allows students to gain an understanding of poverty, homelessness, compassion, and what makes a healthy interconnected Calgary. By grounding education in the community, students see the relevance of what they are learning and therefore become more engaged in that process.
Our collaboration with the Calgary Public Library has created a number of opportunities for all students kindergarten to grade 12. One example of this work came from an interest inventory of reading completed by the library in collaboration with our middle schools. From the results, it was identified there was a gap in student reading interests and availability at one middle school. The Calgary Public Library filled this gap through the use of their book truck by providing a strong bridge between the school and home literacy initiatives. Last week, the Calgary Police Service received the Lighthouse Award, and we all had the opportunity to hear about the impact of their work in our schools. CBE staff work closely with the Calgary Police Service to ensure services are in the right place and that barriers to reaching students most in need are reduced. The following video illustrates the many ways that CPS supports our students. Partner support comes in many forms. Toothbrushes, toothpaste, and floss means that students have what they need to address oral health and also provide entry points for teachers for meaningful lessons in health and wellness. Some partners provide the resources so that students with financial barriers are able to participate in athletics. Over 40 different organizations and individuals came together last year to provide backpacks filled with supplies so students could support their learning at home. Countless organizations offer subsidized trips or transportation so that all students have equal access to community experiences. These include opportunities that range from the Alberta Ballet performances to field trips to the Calgary Zoo.
A final example we feel we must share is our work around food insecurities in our schools. We know when students' basic needs are met, they're more available to learn. Recognizing that every day some children come to school hungry, the CBE works closely with many nutrition partners to connect schools with the resources required to support students in need. Fuel for School is one CBE program that provides partial support for a breakfast supervisor and food in 20 schools thanks to funds raised from a number of sources. Last year, over 130,000 breakfasts were served in these 20 schools. The following video highlights CBE's Fuel for School program.
We value our partners. We find many ways to acknowledge their contributions from a simple thank-you note to our Better Together Breakfast event. We know that the very best kind of thank-you is letting our partners see firsthand that they are making an impact with our students. Where possible, our partners visit the school sites they are supporting or receive feedback and impact statements from our students. We know that all our partnerships make a difference for our students. The impact each partnership is measured differently. In some cases, our evidence of success is determined by the growing participation rate. We can see that our backpacks program is now reaching more than 3,600 students per year. Each year, we see an increase in the number of students who are able to have a healthy breakfast. The increase in Campus Calgary Open Mind pilot sites means that more students each year are able to participate. In other cases, the evaluation of impact is embedded in the initiative itself, as some partnerships contain data components. For example, the Integrated School Support Project with the Calgary Police has specific measures related to the program.
Other measures of success are more informal and are measured and recorded through anecdote. We collect impact statements from students, parents, and school-based staff on many initiatives. For example, what we have learned in our work with the government-funded nutrition program is that it is truly more than nutrition. In addition to anecdotal reports of increased quality of student In addition to anecdotal reports of increased quality of student engagement during instructional periods, we have found food programs also build relationships, improve sense of community, and have resulted in better personalization of learning as breakfast provides great entry points for bigger conversations. This video is an impact statement from Aubrey Fletcher, Principal of Marlborough Elementary School. Marlborough was CBE's first government-funded breakfast program, which began in October 2016.
Our program has moved beyond simply putting food into tummies. It has given us the chance to have conversations with students about getting ready in the morning, the necessary requirements for learning, ensuring that they're regulated, and feeling like they have a full tummy in order to learn, not just to not feel hungry. It has helped us create a community beyond the walls of our school. Often, we'll have parents that come in and ask for support, or siblings we notice heading off to junior high without food in their tummies. This has been an opportunity for us to care for families in a 360-degree way.
We also measure success through the interactions we have with our partners. Regular meetings help us to ensure that our visions are aligned and that programs conform to administrative regulations and our strategic direction. Building such relationships speaks to the mutual commitment for improving conditions for success for our students. We are so thankful for the many relationships CBE has with our partners and for the generosity of our community. Moving forward, we will not only continue to steward and nurture our existing partnerships, but also look to partners to fill new and unanticipated needs. We continually strive to improve our partnership process because we are better together.
Chair Hurdman and trustees, Tanil and Paul are certainly able to stay and answer any questions you have, as is our director, Sheila MacLeod, who I'll point out will be back with another presentation and with the other half of her role on global learning in just a few weeks.
Thank you, that was a wonderful presentation. Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Dennis?
More of a comment than a question, I guess I was, had this little pad of paper and I kept scribbling down questions and then your next slide you'd answer them, so I'm crossing them out. So you were really thorough, so thanks so much for that. I guess I was especially encouraged to hear that you are using sort of that, obviously you're somehow monitoring how successful the partnerships are and using that information to leverage, you know, increasing, increasing partnerships or having them grow or continue. So that was really encouraging, so thank you. I was curious a little bit about the Fuel for School program, so that it's working right now in 20 schools. And I was just curious, just a lot of the photos were of elementary kids, so do they go into middle schools or junior high schools, any high schools as well, or do we kind of focus on the little ones?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, our Fuel for School program is an elementary K-6 program as it primarily supports that breakfast supervisor position as well as the food. We do have food programs in our other levels, including our high schools as well as our middle juniors. Those programs are supported through our other partnerships such as Breakfast Clubs of Canada, Breakfast for Learning, the Food Bank, and the others that were listed in the slide.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, just an example, I was talking with someone the other day, our outreach programs for our high school students have Brown Bag as a partner and provide food on a regular basis.
Trustee Hurdlicka? Okay, trustee Dennis?
Sorry, to remember my question really quickly here. Oh, so I understand, obviously you do work around matching up, you know, schools based on their need with the, with the appropriate partner. I'm just curious about, is there a long list of needs that you've got that you're still trying to find partners for? And kind of how do we go about filling in those gaps? Or do we keep track that way? So do partners sort of self-identify and then we plug them in, or do schools mostly identify they have a need and then we try and match them up with somebody?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, a little bit of both. Often, we will get calls from principals or teachers in schools looking for resources or ways they can address problems or concerns in their school. And then other times, the phone rings and we have opportunities that come to us over a phone call or an email or through other connections that we make. So for example, through Campus Calgary Open Minds and Chevron, we got a large donation of furniture last year, talking with them and working our relationship with Chevron for our new area offices.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, one of the roles that these folks and our principals play is to work with partners to identify needs together and identify ways for those needs to be met. So I could give you an example of a partnership that approached us. It was not necessarily the school that needed their support, and we recommended a different school and they were very open to that. And over a period of a three-year time span, the activities of that partnership adjusted as that school's needs were met in one area and became evident that other needs were needing. So it's an ongoing process as we work each day with our partners.
Chair Admin to trustee, I think is also a collective impact of our partnerships. So when I think about the food insecurities that Tanil and Paul talked about, the Calgary Public Library is also a partner of ours, and so together they were offering programming and on the weekend noticing as kids were coming to their Saturday programs or going away for spring break or summer programs that they, again, food insecurities don't go away because school's out. And so we were able to connect them through our partnership to the Food Bank. So communities they were going into to offer summer programming now offered support through the Food Bank. So I think our partnerships support our learners and beyond, support our community.
Trustee Dennis?
So can you identify which, I guess, issues, for lack of a better word, but when we're trying to match a partner up to help support an issue, are there certain ones that are more difficult to find partners to accommodate than others? And what might some of those areas be?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, I think it's always difficult to fully anticipate what any needs are because they can be based on the current economic status or conditions, I should say. Food insecurities are probably one of our biggest challenges that we are facing. As we saw the economy change slightly, those partners that we rely so heavily on, some of their funding did have, was impacted. Because it is such a strong group, we work together to fill whatever gaps we can and just monitor very closely where there might be shortfalls and then reach to the broader community in order to find solutions to solve those.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, for an example, just to build on that example from Tanil, one of the schools we had identified in need of support with a Food Bank program, after investigation with them, the Food Bank and the school principal, the school principal actually turned down the program because they had an in-school solution with their parent council. But that opened up a conversation for other needs for the school in which we could then identify when opportunities come to us, that we can kind of have it on our ready list. Does that help?
Yes, it does. I guess, what I guess I'm curious about beyond that is, are there specific needs that have currently been identified that we are struggling to find a partner to fill in that gap?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, I think of our work with Education Matters, and we've had a couple of items on our wish list for a while that they've been very helpful with. So as superintendents, a small committee of superintendents, we get together and look at some of those items. So building out Library to Learning Commons, looking at Makerspaces, most recently, looking at support for students with self-regulation. So those are kind of are on our wish list and they're out there looking to support us with some of those items.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, as I think about your question, and I recognize, I wish we had very concrete answers. There is an ever-shifting need and an ever-shifting number of partners and availability of dollars for those partners. I think that you would all be aware that we have a very generous city, a very generous society that we live in, but as people go through tough times, their ability to donate changes, partnerships, change mandates, needs within a particular community change. And I could give you an example of a community I recently visited where some very significant changes in housing has brought in a completely different type of population. So they have what they've had for many years in terms of population and now they have a brand-new additional population, and so the needs have suddenly very rapidly changed with that growth. So the agility of us as a system and the agility of our partners to move around is extremely important. But to suggest that any of our needs are fully and always met would simply not be true.
Trustee Hurdlicka?
So I know that according to stats, can, one in six kids in Alberta are living in poverty. And so I'm wondering, in regards to trustees, you talked about some challenges sometimes when we're in difficult economic times, that we're seeing maybe from our regular partners that were there, they can't give as much or they can't give, give at all. I'm wondering what kind of a role has, have trustees played at a, a level that could be, and maybe this is to our chief, or maybe it's even to my fellow trustee, trustee Hurdman, because you've been here longer than I have, and other trustees. What kind of role have trustees done in the past to maybe strengthen some of those partnerships at a higher, not a higher level, I just mean it, I don't mean like that, I mean at a, a level that's different than all the amazing work that you're doing?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hurdlicka, I think that it might be a good thing to start with trustees answering that question, and then I could add to that before we go to staff.
Well, I would talk about the role that trustees have played in the past. I mean, we know our Lighthouse Awards that we have in our board meeting where we can highlight the partnerships that we have within our community to make people aware of the partnerships that we have and also to express appreciation. Like, we can't be funding a lot of these partnerships, we can't be providing these services or these goods that a lot of our partnerships are providing, but providing that recognition. So we have our Better Together Breakfast every year as well, where we also provide that recognition where trustees are often in attendance in order to thank all of our partners as well. But I would say with regards to actually going out and finding and connecting the partners, that is the work of our administration. But I have had people approach me before and I've sent them along to partnerships and I think all trustees would always be on the lookout for other organizations that could be supports within our schools.
Chair Hurdman to trustees, I could add several things to that. Certainly, I believe your results policies, stress, citizenship, personal development, character, that has high interest for those individuals who seek to support us. Certainly, I would agree that the Better for Breakfast kind of activities, the Hitman Hockey Games where trustees approach us, trustees serve as the connection on many, many, many of our partnerships. Trustees sit on the Board of Education Matters and past trustees were responsible for the development of that particular foundation along with others. So trustee activity, all the way from policy down to daily work, certainly impacts our partnerships.
Any further questions? So we have mentioned in these tough economic times that some funds might be limited. I'm wondering if we provide any funds to our partnerships?
Well, I'll begin, Chair Hurdman to trustees. As dollars have become tighter for us as an education system, we have worked very hard over the last 10 to 15 years to try to find ways to support our partnerships without direct cash injection. To this day, we still have partners that we do provide some funding for. More importantly, I think we provide in-kind support. So for example, through our facilities, we provide leasing opportunities for the services without cost because of the services that individuals or individual organizations provide for our students. We have tried very hard to focus our dollars on our mandate and to move away from providing direct support. But we also have partners that provide services that we are not able to provide and are not able to fully pay for the cost of those services. And so we do have formal relationships, and I'm not sure that I'm using the right term, where we contract services from different agencies, from nonprofit agencies. I don't believe we, in this context, contract with for-profit, although certainly we buy goods and services from those. So we have contracts with Hall Services and Woods and other agencies where in order to provide the educational needs, we do provide dollars to those agencies.
Trustees, any further questions? I'd like to thank all the staff involved in creating this presentation. I know that it can be a lot of work, but it's, I think it's important for all our trustees to understand the extent of the partnerships that we have when we're talking about, we're 400 partnerships, that requires quite a bit of organizational capabilities. And with ever-changing needs and with tighter times, and these partnerships have become more important than ever, and we appreciate the work that you've done in connecting our students and our schools with the services that they need to support their learning. Thank you. So as we have no operational expectations, public comment, or matters reserved for barred action today, that brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. With the exception of item 8.1, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. So the board has one labor matter and one strategic governance matter issue to deal with in camera following the public portion of this meeting. And that brings us to the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. I would like to thank all of you who joined us. Our next public meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 6, 2018.